Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 2nd, 2020. I would ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we stand and face the coming eve or on eve of the national election, which has raised a lot of interest and enthusiasm and debate, I am ever mindful of a quote that I recently found that was given by one Abraham Lincoln in 1861. And Abraham Lincoln, on this occasion, said, "Whomever wins, stay calm. We are not enemies, but friends." And I think that may be a good sentiment for America tonight to greet tomorrow with, regardless of what your opinions are, or who you support, or who you oppose. What we have here is a beautiful country, a very strong nation, and one that has overcome any adversity that's ever been thrust at them. And I have every faith and belief that we will go forward tomorrow, whatever the decision is, and that we, as a nation, will rise to the occasion, and that we will continue to stay as strong as our ancestors have brought us to this point to enjoy. Tonight, as always, we want to just ask for wisdom and vision and understanding as the council votes on the issues before them, as we know that each member of the council is here tonight to perform in what their own hearts and minds tell them is in the best interests of our community. We also, tonight, want, as we always do, offer a special blessing to those from our community who are serving in the U.S. military on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. As always, we also want to remember those in our community who are infirm or in ill health, and we just ask that a special blessing also be showered upon them, along with all those others within our world who are also suffering from some problem with their physical health. Tonight, we just ask for vision and understanding as we act on the issues before us, and know that when we are here, we are voting what we believe in our true hearts and minds is the best interests of the community of Batavia, both today and in its future. We ask for all these blessings, and amen. Alderman Miller, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice.
Okay, in this new world that we live in, where we can participate remotely, the reason I delayed opening this meeting for a moment is I asked the city administrator to check the rolls to make sure we had eight people, because we needed eight to have a quorum to conduct the business. And we have, as I see here, is three aldermen in the room, but we have five or six on the phone, or on the computer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess, then, I'd ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Your?
Oh.
Your? Saron? McFadden?
So I'm counting eleven yes and three absent, right?
Um, yes.
All right, well, we do have the necessary quorum to conduct business in. Thank you, everybody, for making an extra effort to participate in tonight's meeting. I know some of you had other commitments and kind of jugged your schedule a little bit to be able to participate there, and we certainly appreciate that. Okay, moving to item four quickly, which is the reminder that we ask everybody to please speak into the microphone, because this meeting is being recorded on BATV. And moving to item number five, which is items to be removed, added, or changed in tonight's agenda. Do we have anything from anybody? Alderman, Chansett, do you have anything?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Okay. All right, so we don't need to take any action there. Okay, moving to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. And it is rather lengthy. Alderman Chansett, would you read that, please?
Indeed, thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for October 12th and October 13th, 2020; the 2019 municipal compliance reports for fire and police pension funds; the 2020 tax levy request for collection in 2020 for the fire and police pension funds; and for approvals: the October 30th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $875,836.50; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $953,473. City council minutes for October 19th, 2020; approval: cow executive sessions for August 4th, August 25th, and September 1st, 2020; the September 2020 city council financial report; ordinance 20-63, declaring property to be surplus and authorizing sale thereof; resolution 20-120-R, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and the County of Kane for household hazardous waste collection services and a rider to offer to contract; resolution 20-121-R, authorization to execute a contract for the 2020-2021 snow and ice removal services with Shamrock Hardscapes and Restoration Inc. for an amount not to exceed $70,000; resolution 20-123-R, approving a resolution to apply for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funding for Batavia Avenue Road Diet conversion from Fabian Parkway to Millview Drive; ordinance 20-62, surplus police vehicle; resolution 20-114-R, authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract with Drendel Jansen's Law Group to provide local prosecutor services; and resolution 20-122-R, approving a construction contract with Carlisle Utility Company for upgrading the 15KV underground circuit along Pine Street for an amount not to exceed $134,759, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, Secretary of State Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion, questions? Chair, hurrying none. The clerk will please call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Motion's approved for the approval of the consent agenda by a vote of eleven yes, three no-nos, and three absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Did we have anybody this evening who wishes to address the city council? All right, moving then to item eight, which is scheduled at public hearing for the 7:30 p.m., so we can begin it, because it's after that time, for the proposed Near East Downtown Business District Tax Increment Financing Development Plan and Program. And I'm told Chris Easton is...
Yes, but Scott Buning would like to introduce the matter.
Okay, move to Scott Buning.
Yes, thank you. This is the public hearing for the Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District, or what's being classified as TIF VI. This is the required public hearing. The Joint Review Board had a meeting, and they recommended in favor of the new Tax Increment Financing District that it voted six to two. But Chris will go through the details on that on his presentation. So, Chris, you are online.
Thank you, Scott, and good evening, members of the council. As a city's TIF consultant, I'll be doing the presentation to open the public hearing on the proposed Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District, or otherwise known as the Near East Downtown TIF District, or TIF Number Six. And for some reason, I'm not getting... There it is. There are seventy-three matters that will be considered in the course of the public hearing that the council will be overseeing. The first one will be the TIF feasibility study. You'll recall that we had done that earlier this year. The second one is the redevelopment plan and program. And the third is to discuss the aforementioned by Scott, Joint Review Board. So with respect to the feasibility study, you'll recall that we did complete that study. The findings of the study was that it is feasible to create the proposed Near East Downtown TIF District, and if done so, would be designated as a conservation district TIF. Quickly on the feasibility study, and at the conservation area, the proposed TIF, which is basically about up to two blocks north of Wilson Street, about a half a block south of River Street, and running easterly from North River Street to North Van Guren, you'll see on the screen those separate block areas, if you will, and the colored parcels are the thirty parcels that, in total, make up just over twelve and a quarter acres. Under the feasibility study for a conservation area, you have to determine one default criterion, and then at least three of thirteen others, in order to show that the area in question is eligible for designation as a conservation or TIF. The default criterion has to do with the age of the existing structures. We found that, and the default minimum is fifty percent. So we found that twenty-one of the twenty-four total structures are about eighty-seven and a half percent, and fourteen of the fifteen principal structures are about ninety-three plus percent, are at least thirty-five years of age. And the minimum is at least fifty percent of the structures have to be that age or older. Then we found documentation and evidence that four additional factors can be proven to a meaningful extent and reasonably distributed throughout the project area. Again, the minimum finding is at least three. We have found four. There are significant numbers and are evenly distributed structures and surface improvements that show deterioration. There are also structures that don't meet minimum quote standards in a meaningful and reasonably distributed way. There's evidence of a lack of community planning throughout the district, and that we, through certified assessments going back five of the last, the five last certified years, we found that at least three of those last five years showed a decline in EAV. That is one of the criteria that was met besides the previously mentioned. So that is evidenced by the assessors' records. The second item that should be considered during the public hearing is to look at the redevelopment plan and program document itself. That was written in compliance with the TIF Act, and was presented to the Joint Review Board for their consideration. The document must include certain components per the Act. And it does, in fact, show nine objectives as a plan. These are all familiar to you, are part of our comprehensive plan as well. For the downtown district, in this case, the project area, we're encouraging higher-density residential projects, we're encouraging mixed use between residential and commercial, we're trying to show street-level commercial spaces, looking to address the existing building stock, surface improvement with respect to their deterioration. We're encouraging redevelopment and building remodeling projects, that's as opposed to clearing, so wherever possible, trying to have redevelopment, remodeling to maintain the existing stock, particularly if it's historically significant. We're trying to coordinate land use and transportation planning, enhancing the marketability of vacant and unutilized properties to encourage private investment, create a safe and attractive pedestrian environment, encourage public-private partnerships. Each of those objectives is outlined in the redevelopment plan itself. In terms of land use, the entire project area is known to be mixed use for land use purposes. So when I say mixed use, obviously retail, restaurant, office, business, and professional services, primarily on the street level, and multifamily residence uses on floors above street level. What differentiates the areas within the district, again, they're all mixed use, but we've differentiated them by densities. So the greatest density maximum that we perceive in the district will not exceed ninety dwelling units per acre. That is the One Washington Place site. You'll see that on the map in gray. The kind of mid-range density, which is to not exceed forty-five dwelling units per acre, is the southeast, the hard southeast corner at East Wilson and River Street, as well as the southeast corner at Washington Avenue, Wilson, that's the old gas station site. And then the more perimeter properties within the district, again, mixed use, but perceived as maximum densities with respect to residential of thirty dwelling units per acre. Also looking at planned land use, could you tell me, I hate to interrupt, except that it bothers me, I don't know if you see it, Laura, is there a bar, a vertical bar, running up and down on the slide about a quarter of the way from the west, or the left boundary of the slide? Do you see that?
No, there is not.
No, we don't see it. It's clear.
Okay, well, that's good. It's on my screen, but no problem. Okay, getting back to planned land use, again, it's all mixed use, but where we've differentiated parcel by parcel, or aggregated parcel basis, is phasing. So there's eight phases outlined that will run from the first year of the TIF through some initiation period of about the fifteenth year of the TIF. And again, I just hope for, or plan for, we recognize the amount of redevelopment opportunities are vast, and there are also a lot of geography involved, and it's representing substantial amount of private investment, as well as some public participation to encourage or entice that in partnerships. So we expect this to develop over time. So there, again, are about eight phases shown on the map. Phase three is kind of a, three sub-phased, if you will, and you can tell by the map where those phases are. Again, it kind of spreads out to the perimeter, with the last phase, the first phase being One Washington Place, second phase being the gas station, former gas station site, and then we look north on North River Street and State Street, and finally, the fourth phase would be out near the northwest corner of Van Guren and Wilson, with the last phase being, what is the art stop parking lot, also home currently to the boardwalk shops. So you can see how it's phased out over time, and estimated years that such phases will initiate. Also, as part of the plan requirements, and what's shown in the plan and here depicted on the map, is what we think to be the estimated potential build-out. Now, this would be under the maximum scenarios, where ninety percent of the maximum scenarios concerning densities for dwelling units, and then some general estimation of what we think would be the commercial space, ground level, perhaps some office space on second floors, but generally ground-level commercial space in terms of square footage. So again, we broke it down by phases. We took the amount of square feet in the parcel, and thereby were able to estimate, on a per-acre basis, the dwelling unit maximums, and then we also looked at coverage for commercial space on the ground floor. So if this were to build out in the proposed phasing schedule, by the end of the TIF term, which is estimated to be 2044, or 2044, we'd have about $48 million in EAV, which is about a nearly thirty-five-fold increase against the existing EAV, or existing certified EAV, which was from 2019. So the increase from 1.4 million to 48 million in total build-out obviously represents a huge increase in equalized assessed value. Also, as required under the statute, you have to itemize the list of TIF-eligible and anticipated categories for expenses. So that chart shows it there, which jumps out at Chair of Property Assembly, and, you know, site preparation, which also can include various issues associated with acquisition, typically in partnership with private development, and leveling a site. So we're estimating, because some of the projects we anticipate as part of the city's contribution in a TIF redevelopment agreement would be acquisitions. So that estimated about 2.8 million. Another sizable cost would be public works construction within the district. Of that 16 million, just over 12 would be the parking garage, and the other costs would be associated with street scape improvements, and in some cases, reconstruction of existing or surface improvements of existing streets within the district and sidewalks that have shown some deterioration already, and presumably will need maintenance going forward over the 23-year term of the TIF. And large proportion of the cost estimates is also attributed to servicing debt, obviously the obligations we're selling for the One Washington Place. And finally, the largest item, or one of the largest items, is the required contribution that has to be made to the school and library district. Now, that's maximized right there. That's if they essentially draw their complete maximum based on the 25% allocation to the school, as well as the 2% allocation of the increment to the library district. Total cost estimates are just over $33.5 million. Going back just briefly, notice that a total build-out with an increment of $48 million, total cost estimate, and $33.5 million. The plan and program document also is required to show findings. These findings were shown within the document itself. Firstly, that the area has not been subject to growth, and we can't reasonably expect it to be so without implementing the city's plans and policies as we adopt the plan. That the redevelopment plan and program document does, in fact, conform to the city's comp plan. That in the plan, we don't contemplate displacement of ten or more existing housing units, nor are there at least seventy-five existing housing units within the project area, and therefore, there's no requirement to complete a housing impact study. And finally, we expect that the plan and program can be completed as proposed before the 23-year TIF term expires. The third item is, you'll be needing to consider going in the hearing, before the hearing concludes, I should say, is what the Joint Review Board did when they met on October 1st, 2020. Obviously, we showed the Joint Review Board the program plan, and, I'm sorry, the redevelopment plan and program document that you've seen previously and was just discussed. The statute is clear in that it indicates there are three considerations that must be made as forming a basis for the Joint Review Board to make the recommendation on the TIF in question. The nine items I've listed here are right out of the TIF Act. I'm not going to read them to you directly, but basically, these items have to be mentioned within the program document, and they are, in fact, so mentioned. Also, the second item that has to be used as a basis for the JRB's decision in recommending the TIF is, did it meet the feasibility study requirements, showing that it can be a conservation district? And not to repeat myself, but as you see, we met the default, and we met at least three, in this case, four, of the thirteen other criteria that are set in the statute. And finally, is the plan and project, is that consistent with the objectives of TIF are in the statute? And obviously, the statute was created to address blighted and blighting conditions because they pose a threat to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare, and that they should be eradicated, and therefore eliminate those threats. So what the TIF, knowing that's the premise behind why TIF was created, the TIF enables or authorizes municipalities to create TIF, and to do so, offset the cost of redevelopments. So this authority is intended to stimulate private investment, certainly encourage people to undertake projects that otherwise, on their face, don't make economic sense. And that's shown to be the case, because the area has not been subject to private investment in the past, as proven through the program document. So how do we create that stimulation? You offer up through the authority vested in the statute, or vested with municipalities and set forth in the statute, to offer participation in offsetting those costs. And at the same time, not only are you encouraging private investment, but you are eliminating the blighting conditions and associated consequences, which were the basis for why the state created the TIF statute itself. The Joint Review Board did meet on the 1st of October, and they did recommend, in a vote of six in favor and two against, the three ordinances that will be coming forward after the conclusion, following this hearing, not immediately, obviously, but at a future COW meeting, the three ordinances that are required to create a new TIF. One is to actually approve the redevelopment plan and the program document for the Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District. The second is to actually establish that Near East Downtown District itself, and then finally, to adopt TIF financing for the area itself. Those are all three separate ordinances, and they were recommended by the JRB when they met on the 1st of October in a six-to-two vote. So what have we done to date since starting this TIF back in the summer? The council has adopted the inducement resolution. They've adopted certain ordinances required by statute setting the date and the time of the public hearing and convening the JRB. We established an interested parties register. We published notice requesting alternative proposals. Incidentally, none were received. The Joint Review Board was convened. We did provide public notice, and we're conducting the public hearing tonight. And then finally, the last remaining actions on the part of the council in creating TIF VI in northeast, I'm sorry, the Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District is to approve the plan and program document to adopt those, adopt TIF, increment financing, and establish the district itself. So, glad I was able to get through this. I think maybe Laura's told you Wednesday marks my fourteenth. They have quarantine. I didn't know I'd be able to get through without coughing, so... But I'm a recovering COVID guy, and believe me, it's no death sentence. We can live through this. So I hope everyone else, if everyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them where I can. And of course, the mayor should open up the meeting also, the public hearing, for public comments. That concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions?
And do we have any questions from, on members of the council? Okay, I will convene an opportunity for anybody in the public that's in the council that'd like to come up and speak about it. Would you come up and give us your name, please? Right, over.
My name is Bill Carlson. My wife and I own the property at 102 North River Street. I can't begin to comprehend what this guy went through in the last 15 minutes that you've been working on for months. You know, all the abbreviations and everything, I'm lost. All I know is that I'm totally opposed to any more taxes, which I'm sure most people are. I don't understand how you came up with all the areas that you've included here, and bypassed all the property on the west side of North River Street, the property on the corner of River and Wilson, and the property going up Wilson Street are all excluded from this TIF district. Plus the fact, you say there's thirty parcels, according to the letter that I got. Well, fifteen or sixteen of those parcels are city property... to the letter that I got. Well, 15 or 16 of those parcels are city property or taxpayer property, however you wish to put it, that aren't on the tax rolls. Is, is this not true?
True.
So they're not going to pay any tax into this TIF. So there's going to be 12 or 14 properties paying into this. How much are we going to pay?
So there will be no increase in your, uh, property taxes. What happens with a TIF district is that as the value of the property within the TIF district increases, the TIF account itself is able to capture that increased tax revenue and utilize that toward, um, buying more infrastructure for the area or incentivizing developments, um, to do those things. But you won't notice a difference on your tax bill. You're just, it's going to be based on your assessed value.
Okay. So instead of $3,600, I'll take $3,800 of my taxes for this TIF. I'm in a TIF now.
Right. So-
But they're taking $3,600 to that, you know?
Right. And the, the base value will get reestablished at the beginning of this TIF so that the other taxing bodies, um, who are part of your tax bill, they're going to see an increase in the amounts that they receive because we're going to kind of reset that base value at the year the TIF is established.
Okay. And why were these other properties eliminated from the TIF? That's-
I believe most of them are already in the TIF.
Right. The-
And I'm in a TIF, but I'm included in this.
The properties on the west side of North River Street are a part of, uh, TIF number one, and it would disconnect parts of TIF number one. You can't have, a TIF has to all be contiguous properties. And if we only took the properties on the west side of North River Street, it would have disconnected, um, part of the TIF from the rest of the TIF.
I'm in TIF one.
Right.
So-
But it, it goes over the top.
Okay. I still don't understand it. I don't understand this whole thing. Like I said, I can't comprehend in 10 or 15 minutes what you guys have done in months, right? I'm not a politician. I'm not into this at all. All I know is I don't think this is right. I don't know where the money's going to go, you know? And I just got the feeling that everything that I've seen, you're going to try and push people out of here, property owners, to redevelop it the way you want it.
An example of what the city has done with TIF in the past would be, um, so for instance, TIF number one. Um, that TIF was begun when the city had the opportunity to put in the, uh, townhomes at Waterford and also the Stone Quarry Pond. Prior to that, it had been a really dirty industrial area and it would have, uh, not been able to attract investment without our ability to provide some incentives. So we built those properties. They, uh, have brought in a lot of, uh, new residents to Batavia, not many kids to put a burden on the school district. But then with the, um, additional tax increment that came from that project, we were also able to utilize those funds to redo, uh, Houston Street, to redo the streetscape on Wilson Street, and to do the streetscape that's on North River Street that has brought us an opportunity, um, to have the One Washington Place project there. So-
Okay. Well-
We're tired to be good stewards of it.
I, I understand what you're, you know, where you're going, but I just feel that you've just overrun the area. I mean, I'll be glad when I'm gone.
Well, if you ever have questions about it, I'd be happy to sit down and have further discussion with you about it.
Yeah. I mean, I believe that certainly your property where it is is potentially in line to become significantly more valuable than it is right now, given what will be hopefully built across the street from you in the very near term with the buildings that are going to be coming in there. So that should hopefully greatly, and I don't think it's going to depreciate your value at all. It's going to hopefully enhance it.
Well-
And our idea here is, is that this is a long-term thing. And if you, if you go talk to towns like Elmhurst and, uh, Downers Grove and Western Springs, they've all already done this. They've largely tore down a lot of stuff and built a lot of stuff up.
Sure.
And one of the things that certainly the mayor of Elmhurst, who I'm, I know is a friend of mine, told me that he, he built a 12-story high-rise building in downtown Elmhurst. If you go in on a train, you can see it. It's sitting right there. And when that was built, it was highly controversial. People, oh, this is going to ruin the downtown and whatever have you. Well, after the smoke cleared and everything, number one, what they found was, is that it was largely occupied by people commuting, on the commuter train.
Exactly. Yeah.
And so they were coming back at, from town or downtown Chicago every night and they were going to restaurants and they were going to stores and more people wanted to put a store in downtown Elmhurst because suddenly there was a lot more people moving down there. But the one thing that was surprising to them, I guess, is that, that Elmhurst as a community was one where they had kind of built themselves out. They didn't have like cornfields to grow annexes and develop and whatever.
Right.
And this, all of a sudden, they had this new thing that all of a sudden was generating a couple of million dollars in new taxes to the York School District in Elmhurst. And so, you know, the, the school district was thinking they're going to have to start cutting back and laying people off or doing whatever because they were going to get tight financially. Suddenly you had this new influx of, of development and that one thing caused other things to happen in downtown Elmhurst. And certainly Downers Grove has told me the same story. And, uh, I was just over and toured the one in Western Springs and, uh, Mayor Gallagher over there is telling me the same story with, and they haven't, theirs is just getting started where people are starting to buy and move into it. But they can already feel the positive impacts. And they say the greatest impact seems to be right about within a three to five block radius of where all this is taking place, which in your case, you're literally right across the street from it. So, uh, I think, you know, you or your heirs someday are going to be hopefully appreciative.
Probably my heirs.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, there'll be, they'll be appreciative that this is, this is there because this is certainly not going to do anything negatively impact your value. I think it's going to greatly enhance your value.
Well, that would be nice.
Okay. Well, that's-
But, you know, I look at this with a shodim project and all I hear is they're going to close State Street. They're going to close River Street. That cuts me off.
Well, so far, none of that's happened. I don't think anything we've done over there so far has hurt your tenants that are in your building.
No, they, it hasn't hurt my tenants. No.
So, uh, you know, I've-
But I, when I, excuse me, when they started supposedly start this project, they're going to close State Street. This is what I've heard from more than one person.
Well, I'm sure if it's closed, it's only going to be for construction or maybe putting some pipe in the ground or something. I don't think we're, I've not been part of any conversations that we're talking about arbitrarily closing down State Street.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
We, we are going to have to do some staging in that area for the construction of the project. But we wrote it right into the contract, asking the developer to make that an absolute minimum necessary. And we'll, we'll hold them to that.
Because I have to get my building. My tenants have to get there.
Mm-hmm.
And anytime, day or night. It's, you know?
Right. And that's one of the reasons why we acquired that Larson Becker property was to offer and be able to move alternative parking and, and kind of access in that area. So we'll do our best and we'll, we'll work closely with the business owners there and the property owners there to try to minimize the impact. But we know there will be some and we're sorry.
Yeah. I, I understand. I've been threatened so many times with eminent domain by this city, by Mr. McGrath, supposedly, mostly. So you can understand my position. I'm ticked off about it. So the whole deal. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We may have someone online who would like to give public comment.
Wait, do you have somebody registered?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sure. Can you use that microphone right there?
No, no, no. I just want to hook it to you.
Oh, look at the map. Sure. Go ahead. Howard, is there a Michael Blinney who would like to give testimony?
Uh, it's Michael Beely. On line. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Howard. Oh, is that Michael?
This is Michael Beely.
Hi, Michael. Uh, go ahead.
I don't know if you're talking to me. I also don't know if you can see me or not.
Cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Okay. Um, I'm just a resident of Batavia. I live at 218 North Water Street. And I've been watching this episode unfold for a few years, but I didn't live in the city. So I was kind of watching it as a interested bystander. But now that I live in the city, I feel like I can share my comments with you. Um, the issue before the council tonight is the approval of a, of a TIF district. But of course, the underlying issue is whether to build a six-level structure at One Washington Street. Uh, as far as the TIF, I have no problem with using public funds to incentivize a good project that under normal circumstances would not be built. But the One Washington, the problem with the One Washington project is that in its present form, it is just not, it's not a good project. Uh, the concept is good, but the scale is out of whack. There are simply too many apartments that are going to generate too many residents so that after you spend $12 million in public money on a two-level public parking deck, you're going to end up with less public parking than you have now. Um, and if anybody questions that, I'm happy to go through the math with them. But you're basically building a new parking deck that two-thirds of it's going to be used by the apartment dwellers, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, and then of course, the other thing that I think almost everyone acknowledges is that this six-story building is just going to be, I'll be polite, it's going to be unsightly. It's going to hover over the River Street open space. It's going to seriously impact the charm and the welcoming feel that we all enjoy in downtown Batavia. And that's a shame because for the last 50 or 60 years, the city has done a really good job preserving the historic buildings and the charming character of the downtown district. Uh, the fact that many of you tonight are sitting in a building that formerly housed the Appleton Windmill Company is a testament to that past effort. And I hate to see us prop this thing down. I always, I liken it to when they improve Soldier Field and they put that horrible structure on top of the historic one. And it just kind of ruined that whole feel down there. So, I mean, I, I don't object to the project. I just object to the size of it. I think that if you were to reduce the number of apartment levels from four to three, you would have a good project. You'd be getting more bang for your buck in the parking deck and you would be, you'd have a far less dramatic impact on the historic downtown. So I don't know where you are in the process. I don't know if you, if you approve this TIF tonight, I don't know if you have any leeway in changing the project because of your previous agreements. Um, if you do not have any leeway to change your previous plans, I would ask you to turn down this TIF tonight and go back to the drawing board one more time. Um, I think a project consisting of a two-level parking garage and three levels of apartments instead of four is worth as community needs and wants. And that's my comments.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Do we have anybody else online?
No.
Okay. Anybody else?
Is there somebody else that you, that you had mentioned? This is Howard.
I haven't been contacted by anyone except for, um, the gentleman who just spoke about speaking tonight.
I, I don't see anybody raising their hands online.
Okay.
Thank you.
Laura, did you want to mention the emails that we received?
Uh, yes. There were, uh, two emails that were received that were circulated to city council and, um, both of those will be made part of the public record for the meeting.
We do have, uh, a gentleman raising their hand online.
Good man.
He is self-muted. Mr. Marconi?
If we're not able to connect with Mr. Marconi, if, uh, he would like to, um, send me what comment he would have liked to make this evening, I can forward that to the clerk for it to be included as a matter of the public record of the meeting.
He might be trying to reconnect. He might be having some technical issues. Um, let's, can I try one more time here? We'll see if this works.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Mr. Marconi?
Hi. Sorry about that. First, I want to say thank you to everybody for taking time out of your data, especially the night before the election, to, to do this. And it's very, uh, very helpful. I was just curious why we can't make the TIF district bigger to incorporate some of the additional properties surrounding this. Because if, the goal is to make that a vibrant area. There's a lot of properties over there, include, you know, selfishly including the bank, that could use additional funds that fall within all of, all of the outlines that Chris laid out, um, to help these buildings become redeveloped and attractive again as well. Because if the goal is to create a really vibrant area, you'll need those buildings to be vibrant as well, right? Just a question.
Yeah, Mike, Jeff Shoki, I would, I would certainly agree with you. I'm, I'm, I don't have the map in front of me though, but I, I'm thinking that those other buildings are already in the TIF district, are they not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're included in-
What TIF?
TIF number one.
TIF one.
But that's ending, isn't it? Laura, you told me there's like a year left on it.
I believe there is four years left on it.
Is there any, I mean, because I, when we, when we met with the group that was looking at the bank, we, I mean, the more I get into that project, the more expensive it gets. And so there's, and I'm sure I'm not the only owner over there who's entertaining some exciting things that we want to be able to do, but, um, you know, it's hard right now to get funds in terms of borrowing from banks, et cetera.
Well, establishment of this TIF does not preclude us from considering, um, forming TIFs for other properties as well. So this is TIF number six, if there were an appropriate, um, additional area where that was needed. And certainly, we could look at the places that were not developed as part of TIF number one as, as possibilities. Um, but we felt that this was a manageable group of redevelopment opportunities, um, contiguous to one another for this particular TIF. Scott Buning, were you going to add to that?
Yeah. And I was just going to add that, um, the one problem when we were establishing a TIF, um, you know, we can reduce the size of it, but we can't really easily, um, increase the size of it once we get into the process because that really means we have to go back and start the whole process over again. Uh, we have to go back through the whole public hearings and everything else that's involved with it. But again, that does not preclude us from creating another TIF, uh, if it makes sense, you know, at, at some point in the future. So if TIF one expires and, uh, we look at that and say, you know what, this, this area still needs some help, um, we could go ahead and create another TIF at that point in time.
Are there still funds available in TIF one?
I believe, I believe there are.
Yes.
I mean, that's, you know, we, we collect tax revenues every year from TIF one and TIF three right now.
Okay. Also, in, in Chris's slides that he was showing earlier, when he was talking about the phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, and phase five, there were some properties surrounding some of those that were hashed out that indicate they are, they are rehab parcels?
Yes, I, this is Chris. Hi, Mike. How are you?
Hi. Good to hear you, Chris. Good to hear that you're feeling good.
Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, I, I didn't mention those and, and thank you for bringing them up. Those hashed properties, they're not, at least in this, in this particular phasing schedule- Those hashed properties, they're not, at least in this, in this particular phasing schedule, they're not designated as wholesale redevelopment parcels, where we envision, you know, there could be scraping of existing buildings, there could be aggregating smaller parcels together to create a single building. That, those are within the phases, but the hashed parcels are individual parcels where we expect there to be rehab and remodel jobs done, where obviously TIF funds could be utilized for those rehab and remodeling projects, but we don't see them as teardown and, you know, reconstruction or new construction projects. So, your parcel, say, east of the gas station site.
Yes.
We look at those as, you know, we recognize that there are some factors that contribute to the TIF eligibility report on those parcels, you know, somewhat deteriorating structures and surface improvements, and they can be addressed through what would otherwise be, say, a, a TIF rehab project, like we've done elsewhere, which in some of our programs are limited by amounts, but not if we were to take a redevelopment agreement like we did, say, for Aliano's or for the old Bar Evolution, where we took additional monies and made them available through either grants or, in some cases, grants and low-interest loans, where the city does participate in paying redevelopment costs, but under a more simpler format through our grant program as to a wholesale, as opposed to a wholesale redevelopment, where we might tear a building down and assist in the payment of new construction on site. So, yeah, your properties are, are within the TIF as proposed and would be eligible for rehab monies under a freestanding separate agreement, as we've done similarly under our downtown improvement and facade programs.
When you, when you have the TIF years scheduled, does that mean you're not eligible to do work in like phase two until year four of the TIF?
Those phases are just for demonstrative purposes, that we develop them, you know, over time. There's no governing ordinance that says, oh, wait a minute, we're not at phase three yet. So say, for instance, someone to come in, I don't know if Mr. Carlson's still in the room, but say he were to acquire the property where the tin shed is at and the garage on North River Street. Aggregate that with this Tus-Tai building and its vacant piece to the east, and maybe even acquire the Quonset hut and say, look, now I've got a pretty good-sized parcel here, it's labeled 3A1 on the map that's in front of you.
Yep.
It said, I want to do a complete teardown, or maybe pick up a building and move it. I want to do a project, and I want to do it in three years, you know, starting next year or something. You know, we'd probably do a pay-as-you-go consideration. In other words, as the increment came in, we could help assist in the redevelopment cost under reimbursement, because there won't be enough money in TIF six to provide money upfront for a project like that, but we could assist in the payout, reimbursing them over time as the increment came in. And I could perceive a substantial increment for a project of that size, because, for instance, the city parcel obviously has zero assessed value, and the other parcels are relatively negligible having smaller buildings. So, again, if, if Mr. Carlson were considering that property, or you were to take yours and said, you know what, I want to knock my building down, it's not significant historically, or at least it's difficult to rehab and make it, you know, a, a project that would be feasible with any economic sense, and I want to build a whole new building, you're not precluded from doing that. This map is just for guidance. It doesn't restrict you from doing a wholesale redevelopment, and nor does it restrict people from timing. We don't have to live by that TIF year, we just needed something to make an estimate as to increment coming in and expenditures going out. That's part of the requirement or plan, you've got to show costs, and you've got to show revenues. So, for the purpose of budgeting, Michael, that's how we phased it out.
Okay, thank you. Fortunately, we're working on something exciting there, too, so hopefully I have something I can come talk to you about soon. Last question is, I see that the boardwalk shops are part of the TIF. You're not, after you've spent all that money building a parking lot, and then you got rid of that, and now you spent all that money building the boardwalk shops, you're not thinking now about getting rid of the boardwalk shops and doing something else there, are you?
Well, the idea of the boardwalk shops initially was to attract area, attract attention to an area that had potential for redevelopment. So I've heard a number of people on City Council say that would be a success if the boardwalk shops ended up attracting some type of mixed-use development of the type that we are contemplating here. In addition, those boardwalk shops were built with the mind that they could be moved to a different site, as the place, the original place where they were located had some type of redevelopment opportunity there. So, it, they were built with the idea that it was not meant to be permanent structures.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Jay, do we have anybody else in the public?
I don't see anybody.
Laura, you want to, Scott, want to go on and kind of conclude this thing, then? And we've heard the public.
Yes. Sure.
Yes, so that's, this is the, what we would do now is close the public hearing, because that's the next phase of, of this process, and then we would bring the ordinances back to the City Council to committee the whole, probably on November 16th, I think is the date we maybe have been targeting. And then, at a later date, we would have the City Council formally adopt all the ordinances at a City Council meeting.
All right, so what we're looking for right now is a motion and to adjourn the public hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Somebody care to make that motion? Move by Alman O'Brien, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Alman Maron. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Chanzet? Chanzet? Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Now we're at 10 yes and four absent. Okay. We'll adjourn the public hearing. All right, moving back to the agenda, we'll go to item number nine, which is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce report. We have our president and CEO here to bring us right up to date, so we got person number one here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still here, I saw Laura checking to make sure I hadn't left, I'm still here. Thanks for having us speak tonight. I wanted to tell you that the Batavia Chamber of Commerce is and has been hard at work. We're continuing to provide pertinent information and programming to help businesses adapt during these ever-changing times. A function of the chamber has been to be a conduit of information regarding grant funding available to our local businesses and not-for-profits. We have helped many businesses understand and access the state-provided Business Interruption Grant Program that is available to all small businesses statewide that experience losses due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Businesses that have not applied yet should know that grants are still available and will be awarded and funded on a rolling basis until funding is depleted. Application details, including links to eligibility criteria, are available on the chamber's website. Also, last week, the Federal Reserve announced changes to the Main Street Lending Program, reducing the minimum loan level to try to boost participation in the program by smaller businesses. It will support loans as low as $100,000, down from the earlier minimum of $250,000. See our website for more details on that. The chamber is continuing to offer many educational and networking opportunities with virtual options. We are providing webinars for our members so they can be informed and educated on what resources are available to them. Our upcoming events are Wednesday, November 4th at 8:00 a.m., our not-for-profit forum; Wednesday, November 4th at 11:30 a.m. is our weekly Lunch and Learn series. This, this topic is the post-election forecast and moving money during volatile times. Thursday, November 5th at 7:30 a.m. is the don't-miss event of the year, Mayor's Breakfast. It will be at Lincoln Inn. Twenty-five people will be in attendance, and we are providing a Zoom link for everyone else. There is still time to register on our website to receive this link. On Thursday, November 5th, following that, at 9:00 a.m., there's a virtual program that we partner with Valley Industrial Association. It is called Human Resources Value Proposition for Your Employees. On Friday, November 6th at 8:00 a.m., at Riverside Receptions, we will host a harassment-prevention training program for managers. Wednesday, November 11th at 8:00 a.m., we have our BC Square to Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club, virtual edition, morning networking. On Friday, November 13th at 8:00 a.m., at Riverside Receptions, we have the second half of the harassment-prevention training program for employees. Tuesday, November 17th at 3:00 p.m., we have a webinar that is titled, "When the Crisis Passes, Will Your Small Business Still Be Standing?" On Wednesday, November 18th, is our virtual network, networking it in the evening. It's our spicy edition, where our member, Gindo's Spice of Life, the maker of delicious pepper sauce, will provide a sample of their sauce and a yummy cocktail recipe to all who register. This will be a really fun event, so come join us, register online. Thursday, November 19th at 9:00 a.m., we will have our virtual fundraising tips, tools, and strategies webinar. Since our members' fundraising galas have been canceled, we will hear from experts on how to still raise money for your organization. Thursday, November 19th at 4:00 p.m., we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for 22 Creative Group. And Tuesday, December 8th at 11:30 a.m., our Batavia Women in Business will have their virtual holiday party this year. It benefits the Batavia Access Toy Drive and Batavia United Way. We will have a live fashion show, a raffle, and more. I also want to mention that our, I'll give you an update on the Inspire Celebration. This event is typically held in January. The board has decided to postpone till May, but we are still collecting nominations for the 2020 Citizen of the Year, and we will make that decision in the next several weeks. And so we will still announce the 2020 Citizen in, well, probably in December, so that they can enjoy the honor for the whole year. Anybody who knows of somebody who service and dedication has made a significant contribution to the community is eligible, so please submit your nomination letter to margaret@bataviacamber.org by Friday, November 13th. The 2021 Batavia Community Guide and Membership Directory is being compiled now and will be in the mail early January, but if you would like to take advantage of the advertising opportunities available, it provides by being listed in the annual resource mailed to all Batavia households and businesses, and also the businesses in North Aurora, please contact me. Please remember to support our local restaurants by ordering food to go. Refer to the Batavia Restaurants Delivery, Drive-Thru, and Curbside Pickup document listed on the chamber's website to know how to grab your favorite food. We're happy to share that despite the pandemic, many new businesses have joined the Batavia Chamber this past month, including Pro City Painting, Not Just Grass, the Batavia Ministerial Association, Dorados Landscaping, and School Street Posters. These are businesses that believe in the chamber's mission and benefit from our membership. If you need a product or a service, please go to the chamber's online directory to select a business that invests in our community. As you know, the chamber is excited to be offering Chamber Bucks, our $10 denomination gift certificate that can be used at over 65 participating businesses. They can be purchased over the phone or in-person at the chamber office. If you are thinking of a gift idea for friends, family, teachers, colleagues, and employees, please think of Chamber Bucks. I'm very thrilled to announce that we, the chamber has a new initiative to support local businesses. The chamber is doubling the value of Chamber Bucks, beginning November 16th, until we give away an additional $2,500 in free Chamber Bucks. These bonus bucks will expire by March 31st, so it is an incentive sponsored by the chamber to provide $5,000 into our local retailers as soon as possible. There is a $50 cap of bonus bucks per person, and more details will be coming on our website. As always, I request that you follow the chamber on Facebook and check the chamber's website, bataviacamber.org, to register for our events, sign up as a business or community member, and find other pertinent information. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak tonight, I had a lot to share. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Margaret.
Great. Well, I do want to introduce my special guest. I want to invite up here the Vice President of Sales for Advanced Compressor Technology, Thomas Wempel. Advanced Compressor Technology is located on Lewisport Drive in Batavia. ACT delivers comprehensive field and shop services for repair of large industrial compressors and centrifugal compressors. I'd like to ask Tom to come up and talk about his impressive business.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Tom.
Hello, my name is Tom Wempel. We, as she stated, we built her building on 1400 Lewisport Drive back in 2002. I grew up in Elmhurst, and I was a product of your community high school, before they got the influx of all their benefits of the downtown redevelopment. We work on large reciprocating and centrifugal compressors from 300 horsepower up to 30,000 horsepower. These things are, can I take this off?
Sure. Probably easier to hear you there.
Yeah. Again, we work on from 300 up to 30,000 horsepower machinery. It's primarily used in refineries and chemical plants around the country. Most of our client bases, Fortune 100 companies, ExxonMobil, Marathon Ashland. We do a lot of work with the industrial gas sector, people like Crax Air and Air Products and Lindy gases. These units are used in atmospheric and processed gases for refining petrochemical plastics production. We were the primary and sole contractor to maintain the central helium liquefier unit at Fermilab. As you may know, that Fermilab operated the largest helium liquefier unit in the world for decades. It consisted of four Worthington BDC compressors that are about 3,500 horsepower piece, and they would recover gaseous helium, we would compress it, send it through the liquefier, put it back into the circuit for cooling the TevaTron. So we, as we, we built, started to build business in 1991 in Addison and looked at different areas. We grew intrinsically, we leased a small 3,500 square foot building, and then another one, and then another one, and decided to branch out and build. And when we looked, property values and the tax incentives in Batavia, Kane County were more conducive than they were properties we were looking at in surrounding areas. So that made the decision for us to move out here, and we've been very happy ever since. Another reason for moving out was to, for the labor pool was a little bit, we felt getting a little bit further out west, we could draw from a little larger labor pool. We're constantly looking for help, so it's, it's, we have about 50 employees. We do, our sales are eight to 10 million dollars a year. It's a great place for young guys that are mechanically inclined, or women that want to get into an industry where college education isn't a necessity. Our guys travel all over the continental United States, do, we do a little bit of work in South America. We just shipped a rather large oxygen compressor to Ecuador, and then we'll have some crews go there the week after Thanksgiving for about two weeks to finish installing it and commissioning it. So, it's, that's about it. I mean, I've got some literature I can leave you guys if anybody's interested. If anybody would ever like to poke their head in someday and see what we got going on in there, you're more than welcome. We really enjoy being in Batavia, and had tremendous support by police department if the alarm goes off at the building and the high wind and, and things of that nature. So, it's been an enjoyable endeavor for us.
Well, we're honored to have your company in our town. We thank you for choosing Batavia. We thank you for choosing Batavia. Your story I find very intriguing because it plays into what I hear if I talk to people. We've got, you know, 1,350 acres out there on the northeast side of Batavia, which is all zoned for industrial business types uses.
Right.
We've got, most of it's already developed, except for maybe 80 acres right at Fabian and Kirk Road. There is 40 on each corner that is yet to be built upon, but we have conversations now and then with people who want to go there. But certainly, you're right out there at the end of it on Lewisport there, you get DuPage County right behind you.
We're right on the line, and that's actually what started our conversation with the village is the developing part of the industrial park for West Chicago, and we got a notice that they wanted at Avariance to put a driveway close to our property, and we're like, eh, we don't think so. And we reached out to get some assistance here, and everything, they changed their mind, and they're not going to do it, so. And previously, in my personal career, I worked at Furnace Electric as a tire maker early in my life, getting into the skilled trade, so.
Well, I'm sure you can see in the neighborhood out there, that whole street or that whole area has kind of an international flavor to it, specifically with Fermilab right there on your doorstep.
Yeah.
And some of your neighbors out there have told me that they moved there because they wanted to be near Fermilab and, you know, interchange workmen and whatever have you, so.
Yeah.
It's a great place, and, you know, I'm very proud of it. It's a very clean area. We don't have a lot of smell, smoke, bright lights, noise, anything happening that's any worry to anybody, and it's all great jobs, and appreciate all the ingenuity that's going on out there. I know there's some companies out there that do some pretty interesting stories, some of which they tell me they don't want to too widely advertise because they prefer not to have everybody know what they're doing, but, I mean, there is a lot of interesting things happening there.
Well, a lot of the stuff that they've developed over there have impacted lives for MRI testing and things like that, and developments in the medical industry. And even though this, our business seems a bit obscure, just about every single aspect of your life is affected by a compressor in some way, shape, or form, believe it or not, from the gasoline you put in your car or diesel to every plastic bottle you pick up, bleach bottles are made, you know, from compressed propylene that we make the raw product for, or support the plants down chemical places like that that make the raw materials for everything that's in your kitchen cabinets, and medical use and electronics, and just about everything is in some way, shape, or form touched by a compressor somewhere in the manufacturing and development process.
So, pleased to have you in town, and
Thank you.
Hopefully, you're here for many, many more years in the future.
I hope so.
If there's anything the city can ever do to help you expand, or any questions you have about us, feel free to
Tax breaks.
Yeah, whatever. I will tell you, in comparison to a lot of the neighbors, our taxes aren't bad.
I know, but you have to get that shot.
Oh, sure. I just have one question there. So, you talked about the labor pool and always looking for people to hire. What kind of skills would you be looking for somebody to come in and work for you?
You know, we're just looking for people that have good work ethics, are mechanically inclined, maybe college isn't, you know, in their destiny for them. I was not a college graduate. I went to trade schools and learned the machining trades and went into this, and one thing led to another, and we've got, this is a 25,000-square-foot service center. We've got a 30-ton crane bay on one side of it, a 10-ton crane bay. Because of the work that we were doing in Midwest, different firms asked us to get established down in the Gulf Coast, and I opened up another service center just outside Houston in Pasadena. It's virtually a clone of this building, and, you know, we, like I said, we do work everywhere. Our guys will travel, you know, for, our usual field jobs are four to 14 days long because these plants will take what they call a maintenance outage
Right.
and shut the plant down. We'll go in and refurbish, inspect the equipment, make sure it's good to go for another two-year run, two- to three-year run, because these machines run 24/7, 365
Right.
making
And hopefully, when they fire back up, they don't have another outage from something that happens.
Right. They don't want to go down for any reason, you know. I mean, things happen, you know, the plants, you know, whatever, they may have a power interruption, and that may affect our machines, and we'll have to go in and do a quick inspection on it, make sure they're in the coast down, nothing got hurt on them, but, you know, it's, we have a full CNC machine shop capabilities there with five-axis machining, so it's state-of-the-art stuff, even though we're working on some equipment that's 30, 40, 50 years old at times.
Right.
It just, it has to be rebuilt and reconditioned and brought back up to go for another run.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Well, thanks.
Can you leave those, please?
Yeah. Where would you like me to leave them? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Again, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving then to item number 10 on your agenda, which is Motion to Approve the Bid and Sale of Parcels North and West of 917 North Van Buren Street. Who's got this one?
Scott?
Scott Buning?
Yes. This is the sale of the remnant parcels along 917 North Van Buren Street. We had advertised this for sale, and we received one bid in the amount of $9,000. So, we are recommending that, because these parcels are access, and we no longer need them for municipal purposes, to go ahead and approve the sale of this via motion with reserving of a public utility drainage and access easement along the northern 10 feet of the parcels being sold.
Okay, do I have a motion for the sale of the property next to 917?
So moved.
Move by Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Second by who?
Malley.
Malley.
Malley, okay. Any further discussion?
This requires two, this requires two-thirds majority vote on that.
Okay. Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knapp.
Aye.
Chancet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
So, that vote is 11 yes, three absent, is that what it was?
Yes.
So, we do have the necessary two-thirds. Okay, very good. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 11, which is Approval of Request from Suncast Corporation to Install a 1,230 KW Photovoltaic System at Their 1801 Suncast Lane Facility. Who's got this one?
I do.
Alderman O'Brien.
So, Suncast made an application to, for a photovoltaic system. They will generate approximately 1,230 kilowatts. It is industrial. We have an ordinance that only allows for residential and commercial, and we only allow for 10 kilowatts or less. So, this is going to be a little trying. We had lengthy discussion on this. It did pass the council at the COW. There's, you know, obviously Gary sent out a memo today regarding Suncast and what their intentions are, so I just, I'll leave that to go from there.
Are you making a motion?
Well, I thought there'd be a discussion, but I'll make a motion. We pass, excuse me, we pass, I don't know what the motion is, but we, we pass the Suncast Corporation to install a 1,230-kilowatt photovoltaic system at 1801 Suncast Lane Facility.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by O'Brien, second by Miller, for the approval of the request from Suncast Corporation. Any discussion on it? I know we've talked quite a bit.
I just want to say, I'm going to support this again. You know, Suncast, you know, they're a responsible corporate entity in our city. They are going to have, with their addition and their expansion, they're going to, you know, produce 800 furthermore jobs. They, hopefully, will have an additional three to four megawatt with the expansion. And just politically, you know, we're going to allow these guys to further, you know, green infrastructure and sustainability. I mean, it's difficult for us to do with what we're in with Prairie State, and it makes it difficult, but here we have an opportunity to do that, so we can still continue to say, you know, we're moving in the right direction regarding sustainability. So, this is something I would definitely want to support.
Anybody else want to make any comments?
Your Honor, this is Alderman Wolf.
Go ahead, somebody who wants to talk.
Alan.
It's Alderman Wolf.
Alderman Wolf?
I will also kind of echo what Alderman O'Brien just said. You know, Suncast is a huge employer in town. I think that, you know, even though this is a large portion of what we will allow for photovoltaic system, you know, input into our system from, you know, the public side of it, they really, in a total amount, what they use, this is a small portion of that. So, you know, comparing it to, say, a homeowner's system and what they can generate, I think a homeowner could generate half of what they could actually use out of our system. This is nowhere near half of what they use. This is a very small portion of it, even though the system is large, you know, in number, they do use an extremely large amount of power, so I don't have a problem with it. Now, we got the information back from Erie. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
This is Marty. Yes, I am not in support of it for some of the, kind of some of the very reasons that were mentioned. I am not going to support it because it eats up the availability for our residents and the commercial users to be able to diversify and to be able to allow them the ability to put solar. I went back and reviewed our discussions on this back in 2017, 2016 on it, and that was why we left out the industrial users to begin with, because they are going to be using so much power on it, and for order, in order for us to maintain the 2% or under, we had to exclude them. And this initially came to us because residents were wanting to be able to diversify, and at the same time, we recognized that we wanted to encourage the environmental sustainability and responsibility. This kind of goes in the face of that, of what we were trying to do is help out the smaller entities, the smaller businesses, the smaller residents, who don't have the pocketbook of a corporation to put a large photovoltaic system on, and thereby it takes up all the use. So, all of what we are doing is just allowing Suncast to be able to do this. No other industrial users are going to be able to take part in this, so if we had wanted to separate a different category for industrial alone and discuss the ramifications in relation to Prairie State and our ability to not pass that along to the other ratepayers, I would have been willing to have that discussion, but as this lumps it in with the smaller people in town, I can't support it.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll call the roll then on the motion for the approval of the request from Suncast Corporation. Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
No.
Meitzler.
No.
Malley.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knapp.
No.
Chancet.
Did you say, we couldn't make it out, Dan?
Did you just give your vote again?
Aye.
Thank you. Wolf.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Well, that is
Eight yes, three no.
Eight yes, three no, three absent, okay. Motion's approved.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Before you move on, if we want to have a discussion on this in the future, I think it would be good for us to bring that up at another meeting, a COW meeting or something to discuss this, and if we wanted to change and have a separate ordinance that would control this on the commercial and industrial side, and then also a separate ordinance for the homeowner side, the smaller side, I think that would be a good discussion for us to have and decide how we want to handle that moving into the future.
Well, thank you for that. I was going to bring that up under other business, but I appreciate that you did that because I
Yeah, I think
I agree with you.
that's something that we do need to have that discussion, and we do need to make a decision on how we want to handle that, because this question will come up again moving forward, whether it be photovoltaic, wind generation, there will be more of these questions in the future, and we should be prepared how we're going to handle those.
All right. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let the record so reflect Alderman Wolf's comments, and we will get some stuff together with the staff and put that on for a future committee meeting.
Yes.
All right, moving to 12, which is Approval of Wave Formal Bidding to Award a Contract to Midwest Public Safety to Provide Genic Body-Worn Cameras to the Batavia Police Department. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, I have that.
Okay.
So, as we learned last month, we had an opportunity to outfit our police department with cameras. We have the opportunity also to participate in a purchasing program that the county used to get favorable pricing. So, the reason that we have two items here is we're not going to put this out for bidding. We're going to take advantage of this program, and also, we learned in committee that the price of this, we're able to locate the funds from unspent money that was already included in this year's budget. The chief is here, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? So, your first motion is going to be the wave formal bidding, correct?
Yes.
Correct, and I would make that motion.
Second.
Move by Alderman Chancet, second by Alderman Barron, for a motion to wave formal bidding to award a contract to Midwest Public Safety to provide genic body-worn cameras for the Batavia Police Department. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chancet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knapp.
Aye.
So, it was 11 yes and three no, or three absent, excuse me. Okay, now then, we move to the next one in conjunction with that one, which is Resolution 20-125-R, Wave Formal Bidding to Award a Contract to Midwest Public Safety LLC to Implement a Body-Worn Camera Program for an Amount Not to Exceed $149,187. Alderman Chancet?
Your Honor, a move that we approve the contract in an amount not to exceed $149,187.
Second. Move by Alderman Chancet, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the awarding of waving a bidding, a contract to Midwest Public Safety LLC to Implement a Body-Worn Camera Program for an Amount Not to Exceed $149,187.
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
That was 11 yes and three no, or three absent, excuse me. Okay, now then, we move to the next one in conjunction with that one, which is Resolution 20-125-R, waive formal bidding to award a contract to Midwest Public Safety LLC to implement a body-worn camera program for an amount not to exceed $149,187. Any further conversation? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
So that's approved, 11 yes, no no's, three absent. And I just want to say, you know, I applaud the city council's efforts to put this program into implementation. Needless to say, I talk regularly with the police administration, probably almost every day we got something going on. I feel like I'm the fourth one down there with a uniform on in the chief's office many times. It's, we get a lot of, lot of stuff going on with those guys these days, those guys and gals, and they do such a great job for us. I just think this is going to be another tool, and if they need it, I strongly support that we put it on. And certainly, I think it certainly helps bring, I think, a heightened degree of comfort and awareness on the parts of everybody that, you know, if anybody feels that there's going to be any mistreatment of any citizen or, you know, any mistreatment of an officer, it's all going to be right there for anybody to see it and understand it. And so I appreciate our efforts in putting this into implementation. Interestingly, I've had a couple other mayors hear about it and call me and ask me, you know, how much does it cost and how are you doing it? In some places, it sounds like there's a little bit of controversy about it, but we've seemed to move this along thanks to the police administration and the very thorough way that they presented it to you. I think that everybody's very comfortable with what we're doing here, so I appreciate the good efforts. All right.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I could, real quick?
Sure.
I just want to thank the chief for all the time that was spent by the department to put this together, to make this happen. And then I also have a question, and I think this is another thing we may have to discuss at Cal. I think we need to develop a protocol for any time there's an issue that would warrant any of that footage being released to the public, how we will handle that, and what kind of criteria we would use for that being made public. I know that constantly, every time something happens, wherever it happens in the country or in the world, everybody wants to see the footage the next day or the next minute. And I don't know that we should be in that kind of situation where we're just making those decisions randomly. I think that that should be a policy that we put together and that we adhere to, no matter what the situation is, that we use that policy to allow the dissemination of that information to the public.
Yeah, I totally agree. I will tell you that Chief Yule and his staff, I know, are already working on something like that, and will be coming to a committee meeting sometime, once we get this thing kind of up and going here a little bit, so that the council's fully aware of everything that's going to happen, how they're going to handle all these types of situations. And we will be alerting you all, and certainly, hopefully disseminating some information to the community too, about, you know, how this is all going to be handled, because it's a new area, but I'm very confident with the police administration and the department we have, we are not going to have a problem. I think this will just be another very worthy tool that they'll put to good use on the parts of Batavia. I appreciate, I think the council needs to be on top of it, though, and fully understand it and be able to answer any questions, because I'm sure you all probably get a few from some of your constituents about how does this work and what are they doing, and et cetera, et cetera. So, all right.
Right, and I just, I think that that's a very important thing moving forward, that we get that, you know, figured out and agreed upon, and move forward with that.
I agree.
Mayor, if I could jump in here for a minute, this is Chief Yule.
Sure.
Yes, we have a couple of model policies we're looking at from other agencies that have already implemented body-worn camera programs. Some of that language is included in there, and I'm sure that was developed in concert with their elected body. So that is definitely something, we can come up with some, I guess, some options, a menu of options for the city council to review as far as best practices from other communities, and then have you select the one you feel most comfortable with at a future meeting.
Right.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving then to item 14, which is Resolution 20-124-R, approving a resolution to apply for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, ITEP, funding for the Fox River Bike Trail path construction. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Alderman Wolfe?
Thank you. In 2017, we discussed putting a realignment of the bike path around the riverfront adjacent to our water treatment plant to try to take care of some strange routing as it goes around the water treatment plant to the west and bring this more towards the river. It's also the possibility of doing some riverbank stabilization to reroute this. So this would be applying for a grant from the ITEP funding for this path construction. And if we were to get that, then we would have to decide how we would want to fund that, and, you know, at what level they would give us funding to move forward on that. I think this is very important, that any time there are grants like this available, that we look at the possibilities of what we could do with that to help fund things that may not happen if we don't get a grant for this. So I think this is just a logical step to move forward in that proposition, to try to do that path reconstruction, a realignment.
Very good.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 20-124-R, approving a resolution to apply for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funding for the Fox River Bike Path Construction.
Second, Miller.
Move by Alderman Wolfe, Second Amendment Miller, for the approval of Resolution 20-124-R, approving a resolution to apply for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funding for the Fox River Bike Trail path construction. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
So that's approved, 11 yes, no no's, three absent, okay. Okay, moving to 15, which is Resolution 20-113-R, authorizing an execution of a one-year renewable contract for victim and crisis services with the Association for Individual Development. Chief Yule, you want to make any comments about this one?
No, other than to just say that we are extremely pleased with our continued relationship with AID. I believe it's going on 13 or 14 years now. They've helped immeasurably, available to us 24 hours a day. Even though we don't have a full-time dedicated social worker in the building, we do have access to them 24 hours a day. And for the price of $7,500, I don't think we can beat that return on investment.
Any other comments from the council? I just want to say that as one who gets to counsel with Chief Yule and his staff, as I've already said tonight, on an ongoing basis, this is a big thing. We've got a lot of this need for this type of service in this town, much more than what I would have ever guessed we would have. And so this is a very valuable tool that they have, and I think there's been, I would even go as far as to say, there's probably been a life or two that have been saved because we got some people in here that could kind of understand and direct and cope with situations that were, had a high degree of volatility surrounding them, and we didn't know where they were going. And I, so I just think this is extremely well-spent money, and I would strongly support this. Any other comments? Ask somebody?
Your Honor?
Yes.
This is Alderman Wolfe. I will echo what both of you have just said. I think this is probably the best money that we spend every year for what we get out of it, and I believe it helps our department not only provide for services that our, you know, our people need in this town, but I also think it reduces that stress and that need for our police personnel to have to try to provide these skills. I mean, I think there's somebody that knows what they're doing when they are put into that situation, this helps out our officers to do more than hat, than that, or to, I should say, to do less than they really are called on sometimes to do. And I think this is probably, you know, one of the things that I've been on the council that I think really has helped out our department, be as good as it can be. So I'm all for this.
So you're making the motion?
Sure.
Second.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 20-113-R.
You made that, Alderman Wolfe has made the motion, and Alderman Barron has quickly seconded the motion for Resolution 20-113-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that's approved, 11 yes, no no's, three absent. Okay, 16, the administrative report. Laura?
Sure, I just have a couple of things. We have received information now that the Waste Management has acquired advanced disposal. And so over the course of the next 12 months, we'll see the name on the side of our garbage cans change once again. But other than that, there should be no other difference in the type of, level of service and what we pay for it. Remember, we signed a five-year agreement, and so all of those prices and services will be honored by the new owner Waste Management.
They continue to use our waste transfer station?
Yes, they keep using our waste transfer station, for sure. Our next budget meeting will be next Tuesday, that is November 10th, at 7:00 PM, and that will also be the public hearing on the budget. As Peggy Colby receives questions about the budget, she compiles those in question-and-answer format, and will continue to be posted on the same page as the 2021 budget. So if anybody is interested in those, she will be posting those there. We are in the midst of leaf pickup, and right now, that is continuing on, this week, we are on the east side, it's our second round of pickup, and then we'll go back to the west side again on November 9. We do have a third round of leaf pickup scheduled to begin. It'll only be done if weather is permitting, and that will begin on November 16th for the east side, and then November 23rd for the west side. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Laura?
Yes.
Not a question, just a comment on the leaf pickup. Just a reminder for anybody that hears this, that the leaf piles need to be in the parkway, not in the street. And if while you're outraking, you can make sure that the drains stay open, so if it does rain, we can get the water down into the drains.
Yeah, that'd be really important to check the drains, especially after the high winds that we had over the weekend. You know, as much as people tried to put the leaves in their parkway, mother nature picked them up and might have put them someplace else. So if you could check those drains and make sure they're open, that is really important this time of year to prevent street flooding.
And Laura, could you maybe give us an update as to where we think the construction on Main Street's going as far as time goes?
Oh, sure. So the Main Street construction, we're, at the end of the month, is when we're going to be getting to replacement of the sidewalk on South Batavia Avenue. But we already have the binder course down on Main Street from Water Street to South Batavia Avenue, and so we're going to look to be finishing that intersection here in the neck, over the course of the, up through, say, Thanksgiving. And we're going to try to get as far west as we can, putting down at least the binder course for the winter. There's going to be a lot of restoration that we are not going to be able to get to this year, but we'll come out in the spring and make sure that all of the remaining restoration work is completed. Throw it over to Gary to see if he has anything to add to that.
For the businesses along Route 31, they will have new sidewalk, new curb. The pavement probably will be in some sort of temporary condition that, you know, will be seamless to the driver, but those of us who know the project will know that it has to get torn up again in the spring. But the businesses will be able to be fully in service throughout the winter months. And as Laura mentioned, asphalt plants are closing Thanksgiving, so there really won't be any work after that from an asphalt standpoint.
Moving then to committee reports, community development, Alderman Callahan?
Clearly nothing for tomorrow. Wednesday is the planning and zoning. There's going to be a variance for a front porch on Newton Court. There's a design review for a speculative building on Pearson Drive, and a public hearing for some amendments to the text of the zoning code.
Public utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Government services, Alderman Chanset?
No report, Your Honor.
City services, Alderman Wolfe?
No report, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have other business?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
So I had a memory pop up in my Facebook feed the other day, and it was a reminder on Storehenge when that was initially installed, and there was some language on there that mentioned, portrayed mental illness in a, kind of a negative light. And that was put out, mentioned to me by a resident at the time, and we learned from that, and the language was changed. Along those lines, in an effort to kind of make sure that we are always being better and not perpetuating errors in history. Tomorrow is voting, and in the past, it was a, after the Civil War, some of the poll tax and the efforts to disenfranchise voters, African-American voters was put in place. And one of the terms that came out of that was called grandfathering, which, after they instituted some of the language that only your grandfathers could put. That was something that I learned over the summer, and I've noticed we have kind of put it in our reports, because it's become a term that people use. But now we're learning, and in an effort to go better, it's just always better to be mindful of the language that is out there that probably we shouldn't be using anymore. I just happened to notice it in one of the reports tonight, and maybe just learn from it and move forward.
Anybody else in the council have other business?
I have something, Your Honor.
Go ahead. Alderman Beck?
Yes, so I was, at first, I apologize that I didn't have the, the timing didn't line up to actually get this on a formal agenda, but I was approached about a week ago by the Chair of the St. Charles Natural Resources Commission about sharing a Greenest Region Core member. As many of you will remember, a few years ago, the City of Batavia signed on to be a member of the Greenest Region Compact, and the video of you all passing the globe around as, prior to voting on it, while Anna Baker played "What a Wonderful World" into the microphone, I've used that video in many of presentation now, so it's, it's well-known as the way that Batavia passed this ordinance, this resolution. So the Greenest Region Core program was created between the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and the and the AmeriCorps to supply municipalities like us with support staff to achieve goals that are listed in the Greenest Region Compact and help move us towards a more sustainable region. So, and it's, it's been done in the past, where different municipalities have shared a core member to achieve a common goal. So, I've also mentioned this to Geneva. We were able to get on the phone, St. Charles, Ralph from St. Charles, Andrew Greenhagen from the Batavia Environmental Commission, about what, you know, a project could look like for this area. We sketched out the idea of creating a sustainability plan. A very similar plan was done by a GRC Core member for Round Lake that aligns the strategies in the Greenest Region Compact along municipal operations and land use and mobility and water and wastewater and air quality, you know, outlines where they're doing well, where they're not doing well, and what is yet to be done, and lays out a plan, much like our strategic plan does, for short-term, long-term goals. And we got a tri-cities plan that could help us leverage where collaboration is necessary, because air and water and other things don't really respect border, municipality borderline, you know, and grants are often easier to come by when there's, when there's strength in numbers in a larger geographic area. So, all that to say, the deadline to request a GRC Core member is November 10th, and this is a non-binding, informal request. They have to put in the request to get the funding to fund these positions themselves, so this does not bind us to anything. I believe St. Charles will go ahead with it, with or without us. It's $20,000 for one person to work full-time for 11 months, so split two or three ways. And I think it would be a really tremendous opportunity. The Environmental Commission does a great job of working here in the city as a big group of volunteers to get these things done, but having a plan formalized and a collaboration formalized between the tri-cities would really help push these things along and make us all a little bit more aware of the work that needs to be done. But like I said, all we need is, it's just an email form at this point to say, yes, we're interested. Formal agreements do not take place until July. And I certainly know, after last week's budget discussion, that there's not extra cash going around, but we also don't have to commit any money. So, I would, I would request, if you were in support, that we could go ahead and at least get our name on that list, in hopes that between now and July, that some fundraising can be done on our end, the BEC's end, and interested parties, and we can work out where those funds could maybe come from, because I know that there isn't extra room in the budget this year. And then, if there isn't money come July, or we couldn't raise the funds, then, then we try again some other time. But I certainly know it'll be easier if we can share it than trying to do the full $20,000 on our own. So, sorry to take up so much time at the end of a long meeting, but with the timing of the meetings, I didn't have another shot.
Hey, Abby, I'd support you on that.
Yeah, I've had the.
Yeah, Abby, I'd also join in support on that. I read through what you sent out, and I agree with that. I think we should get into it.
I fully support it too. Tony here.
Okay. I was just wanting to throw on here that, as many of you know, I serve on the Executive Board of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, which is kind of the mother and father of this movement to some degree throughout the region, and we are having quite a bit of positive success with it. And the executive director I just chatted with today, he was kind of encouraging me on, and he thought it would be good if we could put together a tri-city partnership, which then they probably would show this to some other cities in the region about how you can maybe get yourself involved in this, because they do seem to be coming up with some creative ideas and environmental solutions that otherwise you don't easily get to hear about. And so, it's still a work in progress, I will tell you that, but I think Abby's kind of outlined the timing of it, and as we move forward, I think there is some real good opportunities here to be very, very creative and at the front end of a, of something that I think will have a very positive impact on the region in the next five years or so. So, I would encourage it too. I don't know, do we want to make a motion to go on record here? Abby, what would you like to have happen here?
That was a question I had. I don't really know what we have to do, but I'm happy to make a motion if that's what's necessary.
Second.
Yeah, once you, you made the motion, it's been seconded by Alderman O'Brien, that the city council go on record as supporting the continued conversations of a consolidated environmental discussion between Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles in cooperation with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. Was that, did that sound okay?
Okay.
Everybody understand what I just said? I hope.
Yeah.
Lot of words there.
Yes.
It covers everybody that's in the game.
Abby, I know you had a conversation with Mayor Burns in Geneva. I mean, did he seem interested in joining in with the tri-cities, and is there a possibility of maybe adding North Aurora on, and, you know, that takes our dollar amounts even down more? Because I know that, I saw that they were part of it, and they're so close to us.
That's a really good question. So, in my brief conversation with Mayor Burns, so he's actually the Chair of the Environmental Committee for the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, so he's pretty involved with the Greenest Region Compact and all the work that they're doing on that project. And so, it'll be, you know, a budgetary and a discussion with his council to get that pushed along. So, I said I would follow up with him and let him know as soon as I had word from Batavia, and had an outline of what we thought we could do. North Aurora, that's a really good question, because I didn't realize they were, they had signed on, and I don't know anybody there in terms of their environmental commission, or if they have one. If anybody has any contact, I'd be happy to reach out and.
Be the administrator.
I can reach out to the city administrator.
His kids go to school in Batavia.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of the lower, that we can get our closer communities.
All right. We have a motion and second for the city council to go on record as encouraging Abby's conversations with Geneva and St. Charles and the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus in putting together this environmental movement for our community, so.
Kirk, call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 11 yes, no, no's, and three absent. Anybody else have anything on the call, on the other business? Okay, under Mayor's report, I just want to be very brief, but I do want to comment, because several of you have called and talked to me about where we are at as a community reference the closing of the restaurants. And Laura and I have kind of put our heads together, and we've been yelled and screamed at, and there is, this is perhaps one of the most, I've been here a long time, but this has been one of the most complex issues that I've ever had to deal with. Right now, as you know, we have, the governor has reinstituted the close of the restaurants. Trust me, we are not alone in this conversation. Every other city and village of all 284 of them, I think in the Chicagoland region, are certainly in heavy conversation about it, because as I've already mentioned, I sit on the Executive Board of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and this is about all we talk about the last couple of weeks here. There's been an effort, I was part of a meeting the other night with Mayor Lightfoot. She has some very strong issues about it, kind of along the same lines we do as a, as a community. The big issue, there's several big issues here, but one of them is, is that nobody's really quite sure what the law is underneath all this, because, you know, we've had court decisions now, including one out of Kane County impacting a restaurant in Geneva, and, you know, we're told that only impacted that restaurant, and there's, there's, there's a lot to be said about who hasn't really stepped up to the plate here and, and provided some leadership. And I think the blame is starting to center itself around the Illinois General Assembly, that they're the ones who are not taking action. They are the ones that seem to have the power to enable the governor to extend his emergency orders and answer a lot of the questions that are all being asked, and the rest of us are running around here trying to do the best we can. And I certainly have been a big promoter in trying to get people to wear masks. I carry them with me. We've got a very supportive industry in Batavia that's been very helpful in supplying us with all kinds of masks for the police department, the fire department. We've given them out to many of the churches and, you know, River Rain and the Elder Daycare Center and Valley Shelter Workshop are three that I know of have recently all gotten. Several packages were dropped off to Holy Cross Church the other day, the Congregational Church, the Evangelical Covenant Church. We've been, Emmanuel Lutheran, Bethany Lutheran, I'm, we've been all over the place with these masks. So, we are trying to mask up Batavia in support of what our residents put those neat signs together, and I've had other mayors call me and want to know where you can get those signs made. So, we've, we've been kind of in a leadership role here, but right now, I'm really hitting the wall, because we've got some businesses in Batavia that are defying the governor's order, and it puts the Batavia Police Department in a very unique situation, because they're being seemingly asked to enforce some law, and we're not sure there really is any law underneath it to enforce it. So, what we are doing is, we're not stopping anybody, we're not closing anybody, we're not arresting anybody, but we are issuing notices to them, saying that we believe that there is some conflict with the governor's order here, and then we further forward those on to the Kane County Health Department, who then makes the final determination, and I guess they, they haven't made a final determination yet, they're still trying to get around it. Well, this is heading in some more direction. I was informed today, I'm going to be invited to participate in some more conversation. I guess we're not talking tomorrow, because it's Election Day, but I'm going to be involved in some more conversations here in the next couple of days with the powers that be, so I may have more to say about this. But I think the mayors, and there's a lot of them that have already made some pretty broad statements about this, Mayor Horland Park being one, we're trying to come up with some type of a situation that will probably allow for some leniency or ability for the restaurants to try to reopen, and maybe that may be that they're asked to perform certain things for customers when they come in the door, like taking a temperature, or asking them to wear a mask at all times when they're not in there. I don't know. We're trying to come up with asking the state to reconsider some types of guidelines that will allow this to happen. I know Mayor Lightfoot has some very strong opinions about it, because she, I think, is getting a lot of pushback from her communities. And I mean, this is hitting, it's a real interesting time, because we're now in the month of Thanksgiving, next month is Christmas. The interesting question was asked about what's going to happen tomorrow night when you have all these political people wanting to celebrate their victories? And are we going to limit this to 25 people and masks and social distancing? And there's probably going to be people in there taking pictures of who's celebrating and who isn't, so there'll be a lot of things floating around about who's doing what here. So, it's, I'm talking too much, but it, trust me, it is a very hot issue in the region. I'm, got it up to my, probably up here to my mouth, and it was as far as the number of things I hear about it, and I hear it when I go out on the street, and I hear it when I go into a church, or when I go into, wherever I go, somebody's got some opinion to offer to me about it. So, again, if any of you on the council need a package of masks, I brought some down here tonight, feel free to get them. We certainly are offering, if some citizen needs them, if they'll come just down to the office here and come in, and we'll provide them with some masks. And we're trying everything we can, and as I say, we are being supported by, you know, Chicago export importers out in the industrial park. They've got access to masks, and they've been very good with us about, you know, getting us in a position that we can widely distribute them. So, I will keep you posted, but we do have an ongoing issue, and the ones that have really been put in a bad place, in my opinion, is the members of our police department and every other police department around here, because you're being told, well, you need to go in and shut this restaurant down, but is there really any law that can really do it? If you write them a ticket and they get an attorney and go to court, there's probably a good chance that's going to get thrown out of court. So, you've just made a big to-do about something that doesn't have any strength behind it. So, you know, if you see a state representative or one who gets elected state representative tomorrow, you may want to bend their ear and say, hey, we need to get this together, because, you know, the other thing that's out there is, I'm led to believe there are several groups in the area who are writing histories of this whole experience to be left for future generations to have. And we've talked today about, I wonder what these people are writing about how this is all being handled, because this is, this isn't a real positive story that is coming out of here. So, we'll see where we go with that, but there's some interesting things happening. So, if you hear my name being used on the radio or something, you'll know that, yeah, I am involved in it, and I'm more involved than I probably care to be, but it goes with the, being on the Executive Board at the Mayor's Caucus and my other roles in Chicago. So, I am one of the targets in the, in the line of fire here, so I just wanted you to know what was going on. So, that's enough for tonight. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Wolfe. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Immediate adjourn. Thank you.